You can adjust. All right. As soon as the Acting City Manager.
I kind of like it.
Yeah, yeah, you're that's beside.
Yes, don't get lost going over there.
Hello.
All right. Okay then, everyone, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of the new year with a new council. I'm very excited to welcome you here tonight. It is Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Got to get used to saying that. And this is the City Council meeting for the City of Alameda. And I would like to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Successor Agency to the Community Improvement Commission, which used to be known as the Redevelopment Agency. We start with a pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask my new colleague, Councilmember Greg Bowler, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Madam Clerk, Laura Weisender, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Members Bowler.
Here.
Dayceau.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Azie Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
All right. And so we begin, and again, this is the Successor Agency Consent Calendar. But these are routine items that will be approved by one motion unless council members, we're all acting as commissioners for the successor agency in this instance, want to remove an item. There's only one item for discussion. So first of all, is there any item on the successor agency agenda that anyone wants to pull? I, there's actually two, because one of them is the minutes. Okay, seeing none. Then does council have any questions about these items on the successor agency agenda? Seeing none. We will go to public comment.
There is none.
No public comment?
But Madam Mayor, if I might indulge.
Please, oh yes, excuse me.
Item 2B is a hearing, so I'm just going to quickly announce that it's a public hearing to consider adoption of a joint city council SACIC resolution approving the development list of affordable housing projects and related funding requests consistent with the 1991 pass-through agreement in the Alameda Unified School District, and a recommendation authorized the city manager to submit recognized application payment schedule and administrative budget for the period from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026, to the countywide oversight board. So this would be the time for comment, but we have none.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And I have to tell you, the clerk goes over with me before every meeting, what I need to do. I write notes in my margin. I just have to read the notes, and then I, it seems like I know what I'm doing. But anyway, so there are no further comments. So then this is, this is the hearing we are conducting? And is it time to call for a vote?
Yeah, you can take a motion.
And so I have to just comment that, I know you've read the staff report. I'm very, very pleased and enthused that these payments are going to a very important affordable housing project called the Poplar, that is an AUSD project. And so we will all look forward to that moving forward in the coming years. So with that, do I have a motion to adopt this joint city council successor agency resolution approving the development list of affordable housing projects and related funding requests consistent with the 1991 pass-through and everything that is there at the agenda title? I'm looking for a motion to approve. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Pryor and seconded by Councilmember Dayceau. All right, any further comment? Any comment, no comment? And we are all in person today, so we can just do voice votes. We don't need to do a roll call vote, because no one is remote. So all those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? None. That motion then passes unanimously. And we, I mean, we've also approved the minutes by doing that. Okay, great. All right, thank you, everyone. So with that, we move on to, I will adjourn the special agency, successor agency meeting, and I will call to order the regular meeting of the Alameda City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call?
Roll call has been notified, five present.
Thank you. And are there any agenda changes?
There are none.
All right. So then we go next to proclamations, and we do have a proclamation this evening. And it is declaring January 20th Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And you might think, well, but today's only January 7th. It's just that the next time we meet will be January the 21st. So we're doing it now, and it's also nice to just have a proclamation out there. And there's some nice events happening in Alameda. So with that, I would like to present this proclamation. Whereas January 15, 2025, marks the 96th anniversary of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Dr. King was a pivotal leader in the civil rights movement and Nobel Prize winner, whose commitment to nonviolent activism radically transformed the fight for racial equality nationwide, paving the way for landmark achievements like the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Though his life was tragically cut short by assassination on April 4, 1968, his enduring legacy has inspired and continues to inspire generations of Americans in the pursuit of justice and equality. And whereas celebrating Dr. King and his legacy compels us to speak out against injustice and stand up for communities that often go unheard, because, as Dr. King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, reminding us that real change starts when we refuse to stay silent. And whereas both nationally and locally, Dr. King's legacy has influenced elected leaders and community members to confront and address historic and ongoing oppression of people of color, including housing discrimination, environmental injustice, biased policing, and all forms of structural racism. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is a recognized state holiday in California, and since 1977, the City of Alameda has honored it through community events ranging from park cleanups to dance and music performances, speeches and tributes at City Hall, bringing people together to reflect, engage, and serve. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is also a federal holiday, recognized as a national day of service that inspires people to turn reflection into action, a day on, not a day off. Across the city and the county, community members give back to honor Dr. King's legacy, from cleaning up the MLK regional shoreline to engaging in civic leadership and more. Dr. King showed us that the power of words, nonviolent resistance, and grassroots action can break barriers and achieve what once seemed impossible. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Marilyn Azie Ashcraft, Mayor of the City of Alameda hereby declare January 20, 2025 as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Alameda, and encourage all residents to take part in community service projects to honor his legacy, and to learn more about the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through books highlighted on the library's online catalog, by visiting the main library's book display in the children's area, and by attending a screening of the 1987 PBS documentary In Remembrance of Martin on Sunday, January 19, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the library's Stafford Meeting Room. Thank you, everyone. All right. And then we'll go next to oral communication. And this is where we take 15 minutes at the top of the agenda, and speakers can speak on any, any item over which the council has jurisdiction, which is not on the agenda. So, so no agenda items, there'll be a time for public comment on that. But non-agenda items. So, Madam Clerk, do we have speakers on oral communication?
We do. Brian Kennedy?
Welcome, Speaker Kennedy.
Good evening. I want to say welcome to both Greg and Michelle. Welcome to the City Council, looking forward to it. You guys are in luck. You'll be working with two very nice people, starting with Tracy Jensen, who's a nice person. And Tracy, I suspect you and I are polar opposites on the political spectrum, but everything I've heard about you says you're a wonderful lady with a good heart. Good for you. And Tony Dayceau, who gets nervous every time I tell him I'm going to be his campaign manager. Tony's a good guy, he just needs to work on the Second Amendment and inalienable rights. That's the good news, Greg and Michelle. The bad news is, we got a mayor you got to work with. She participated in one of the darkest chapters in Alameda history, when they voted to make Alameda a sanctuary city for illegal aliens. Just the ugliest thing that this city's ever done. That was done out of hate. Hatred for a sitting president, who, thank God, is going to be president again, and a hatred for angel families. And angel families are families who have lost loved ones to illegal alien crime. You might have heard of Lake and Riley, the girl in Atlanta, Georgia. Her killer was released by two different sanctuary cities, and he brutally murdered her on a running path. That type of thing. Our mayor was also involved in a endorsement, which, thank God, failed, of a ceasefire in Gaza between the Israelis, who are defending themselves, after the horrific, unprovoked attack of October 7 by the Palestinian Nazis, where 1,200 innocent Israeli civilians were slaughtered. Teenage girls gang raped Jewish girls in their homes next to the corpses of their family members, who were slaughtered by the Palestinian Nazis. Little babies, Jewish babies burned alive in their cribs on October 7. What's the last group of people that burned Jewish babies alive? It was the Nazis. Well, today, it's the Palestinians. That was pushed by a group in front of City Hall, who was actually out there chanting, chanting, "There is only one solution into Fatah revolution." One solution. Translation, the final solution. That's what they were talking about. Rampant Jew hatred. Unfortunately, our mayor was on the side of it. Thank God, it did not pass. So want to give you a heads up, that's what you got to deal with. And you'll see that as you serve your time here, and I wish you both well. And you're going to ask yourself, over the course of your service, who Marilyn Ashcraft hastes more, angel families or Jews?
And I'm going to take a minute to clarify for the record some of the comments you just heard, because I dislike the public being misled. And let me just take a minute, though, to remind everyone or some of the, the rules of engagement, if you will, when we're conducting a city council meeting. So as I say at the start of every meeting, and we'll start the new year with this, this is a business meeting. We are here to conduct the business of the City of Alameda, the people of Alameda. So it's not theater, it's not a sporting event. We don't applaud, we don't boo, jeer, hiss, do the wave. We simply listen politely to comments that are made. We might not always agree with them, and that is fine. That is your First Amendment right in action, and it is a very valuable right that we all enjoy in this country because of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. But what I do ask is for courtesy to all of our speakers, because public speaking can be very stressful for people. Sometimes it's the most stressful thing you can do. A couple of us here are lawyers, who are used to standing up before people and making an argument, but not everyone is. And I never want anyone to feel like they can't get up, like this isn't a safe space for them to stand up and speak. And so that's why we want to be as courteous as possible to make this a welcoming space. This is the people's house. And there are often young people in the audience, and even if I'm not seeing any kids here today, they're often watching at home. I always feel bad when parents tell me that when certain speakers' names are called, they mute the video. But just be mindful of that. We, as adults, responsible adults, should always be setting an example for others, and especially for the younger generation. If you have signs, that's also your First Amendment right. I just ask that unless you're sitting in that very last row, you don't hold them over your head, because you don't want to block the view of anyone sitting behind you. So in essence, you just want to follow that rule of treating people the way you would like to be treated. So then what I want to say about the sanctuary city ordinance of the City of Alameda passed a number of years ago is what it is and what it isn't. And what it is not is, well, let me just say what it says. And you're smart people, you can judge for yourself. So in accordance, this is section 2 of the, of the ordinance. "In accordance with state and federal law, City of Alameda officials, including its law enforcement officers, will continue to cooperate with federal immigration agencies in matters involving criminal activity and protection of public safety." Section 3, "City of Alameda officials, including its law enforcement officers, shall not take any direct action against any individual based solely because of his or her immigration status, whether known or unknown, nor held in custody solely for a civil immigration hold, unless that individual has been convicted or charged of certain offenses or is a sex or arson registrant," or sexual offender or arson registrant. And so the, and then finally, section 4, "City of Alameda officials will not use any public resources or honor any federal program requiring the registration of individuals on the basis of religious affiliation, race, national or ethnic origin, gender or sexual orientation." And I think those are very important protections. And finally, I am going to address what a previous speaker said about a ceasefire resolution. I hope that all of us can recognize the humanity in everyone. It doesn't matter what your ethnic background is, and I do happen to be an Arab American, but I hope we can recognize the humanity involved in the situation in Gaza, and that we can hold more than one truth at the same time, that what happened on October 7 was horrific and should never have happened, and that every one of the hostages should be returned, should have been returned by now. And that there is also immense suffering going on in Gaza, and it is true for more than one thing to be true at the same time. All right, with that, our next public speaker?
Brianna Wing.
Welcome, Speaker Wing.
Hello, good evening, Alameda. My name is Brianna Wing. I graduated from Alameda High School. I have three items to discuss tonight. Track is, traffic is very evident on this island. I'm all for reducing traffic in Alameda, but how are you planning to reduce traffic when high-density housing is being developed? And we already experience a lot of traffic as it is. Next, in regards to the swimming pools being renovated, why install another short-course pool in Alameda versus a long-course pool? Is there space for an Olympic-sized pool? That's a 50-meter pool. I've been wanting that since I was seven years old, and let's say a lot of years have passed by, and it's about time that we install a 50-meter pool. I know the Alameda High School pool is being renovated, and it would have been a perfect time to install a 50-meter pool, because they have the space. Lastly, what's your plan to increase the roster count for Alameda Police Department? I understand Alameda Police Department offers a competitive salary to join their team. Therefore, how would you improve the culture in this department? I love to hear from Chief Joshi and also Mayor Ashcraft, as I've reached out to both of you directly and haven't heard back. In regards to APD, I know that they are, they're shorthanded, and especially CVS feels the burden of that, because, I mean, I go there often, and at night, I mean, I rarely go there at night. And when I did, I saw two guys, I mean, I was only there for like 10 minutes or less. Two guys come in with empty backpacks, empty bags, and suitcases, empty suitcases. And I knew what was going to go on, but, I mean, they're so used to it that they don't, it didn't even seem they cared or called the police, or they don't even have security guards. And this is the last CVS in Alameda. So a lot of lives depend on this CVS for their pharmacy drugs. And I think that it needs to be taken more seriously by the city council. And, I mean, like I said, they're shorthanded with APD, but I think that it's important to acknowledge that and to find solutions for that. My name is Brianna Wing, and I'm a homegrown Alamedan.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on the, we'll close the oral communication, and we will move on to the consent calendar. This is our regular consent calendar now. So these are routine items that are approved by one motion unless a council member removes it for discussion. And any removed items will be called, will be called after we finish our regular agenda. And council members can speak for up to three minutes on the consent calendar. So first off, are there any items on the consent calendar that any council member wishes to pull? Swiveling my head back and forth, I'm seeing no hands. Okay. Any council clarifying questions about any consent calendar items? Seeing, hearing, none, no questions. Madam Clerk, public comment on the consent calendar?
There is none.
There is none. We will adjourn and go buy a lottery ticket. I mean, we will close public comment. So then, any?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I actually do have a question. I apologize for.
Well, my next thing I was going to ask was, are there any council comments on any items? Councilmember Jensen, we'll call on you.
I have a question of the city manager on item 5D.
We'll give you the Acting City Manager, Amy Wildridge. Okay, and your question is?
My question is the status of the building. We've had this on the agenda a number, several times. I think this is the third time it's been on the agenda for this demolition project. So I just wanted to get a little bit of a status as of today. The status of this building, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Jensen, the status of the building, and I'm opening the supplemental memo to make sure I get it fully correct. But basically, it's been completely demoed, demolished, and.
You know, Madam, Madam Assistant City Manager, well, we have a subject matter expert, shall we call on?
Yes, please.
Alicia Struck, will you come?
Better suited than I would be to explain details.
The Acting City Manager, come on up and introduce yourself, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Alicia Struck. I am a base reuse manager here with the City of Alameda. And yes, so the current status, and I was over there today, is the main building, 114, has been completely demolished. All the hazardous materials have been abated from the site. The sheds, as well as that center warehouse sort of shed in the middle, that has also been completely demolished and abated. We are actually a couple weeks ahead of schedule, which is excellent. I believe they're just completing the final haul-off of some of the materials that were left. When we are all done with the demolition, the entire site will be completely fenced and secured.
Thank you so much. That's exactly the information that I want to hear. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I would just like to commend staff and everyone working on this for actually being ahead of schedule. That's outstanding.
Would also thank our contractor, Silverado.
Very nice. And Acting City Manager, Wildridge, as I understand it, this item will continue to come up on our consent calendar until?
That's correct. It will continue because, because this was emergency work in which city council ratified the contract after it was authorized with a city manager. It will continue to come before you until the project is completely 100% closed and completed.
And I guess I would like to ask, Ms. Struck, do we have a timeline, an idea when that will be complete?
So we believe they will be demobilized by the end of January. So we're hoping we'll return maybe your first meeting in February with a final report.
Sounds great. All right, we'll look forward to seeing and hearing from you again.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any further questions on this item before?
Nothing further, I'll move approval of the.
From any of the other council members? Okay, great. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
That you, Councilmember Dayceau, okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Dayceau, that we approve the consent calendar. Any further comments, questions, council? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, seeing, hearing, none? The consent calendar is approved. So now we will move on to our regular agenda items. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item 7A?
Public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance amending the Ensignal Terminals Master Plan and Development Agreement entered into by the city council on February 1st, 2022, to modify milestones and related conforming amendments pursuant to Alameda Municipal Code Section 30-4 and 30-91 through 30-95, general plan mixed-use zoning MX mixed-use. California Environmental Quality Act determination exempt prior environmental review was conducted for the project, and none of the circumstances necessitating further sequer review are present. Amending that implementation timeline has no foreseeable effect on the environment.
Thank you. Come on up, Planning, Building, and Transportation Director, and go ahead and introduce yourself, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Alan Ty, Planning, Building, Transportation Director. Happy New Year. I'm very pleased to introduce this item, which is a developer-initiated amendment to the development agreement for the Ensignal Terminals Master Plan project. Now, while this is a planning matter, the staff work that led to the report before you tonight was jointly prepared by Stephen Buckley, our Planning Services Manager in PPT, as well as Walker Toma from the Base Reuse and Economic Development Department. Walker will be giving the staff presentation tonight. I would additionally also acknowledge that the developer, represented by Mike O'Hara, would like permission to also address the council after the staff presentation. But with that, Steve and I will be available for questions, and I'd like to introduce Walker.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Toma. And by the way, I do want the developer to know, anytime there's a developer or project representative, you have a right to take out a public speaking, a speaker slip and speak just like anyone else. We had a little, apparently, misunderstanding about that, but you were a member of the public, so get that speaker slip in. And with that, Mr. Toma, the floor is yours, welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As Director Ty said, my name is Walker Toma. I'm a community development manager with the Base Reuse and Economic Development Department. And so I'll be giving a short presentation on proposed amendments to the development agreement and master plan, modifying internal milestones for the Ensignal Terminals project. The developer, North Waterfront Cove LLC, and the city have been working on the Ensignal Terminals project for several years. In 2018, the city approved a master plan and density bonus application for the site, but the project still struggled to attract investment to develop the property. In 2022, the city council approved an amended master plan, as well as a development agreement, DA, disposition and development agreement, a DDA, and a land exchange and title settlement agreement, referred to as the tidelands exchange. All of these were intended to facilitate redevelopment of the property. The Ensignal Terminals property is located between Alaska Basin and the Fortman Marina. It's been vacant for more than a dozen years. And in 2012, the city council designated the site as a housing opportunity site and zoned it for multifamily to accommodate the city's regional housing needs allocation arena. The city council's approvals in 2022 allows for a mixed-use plan of up to 589 housing units, 80 of which would be deed-restricted, affordable, up to 50,000 square feet of commercial and maritime commercial space, a 160-slip marina, that's a typo up there, and approximately 4.5 acres of public open space. The project is in compliance with the labor peace requirement, which is in section 6I of the development agreement. There's an existing project labor agreement, or PLA, with the Building Trades Council of Alameda County for the vertical construction. And in addition, the developer has committed to entering into a PLA for the horizontal work prior to the start of construction. And that's all outlined in the DA as well. So what is council being asked to consider this evening? As Director Ty mentioned, the developers requested modified, modified selected internal milestones in both the DA and the master plan, as the current economic environment makes developing the project infeasible. The extension would allow more time for economic conditions to become more favorable, while retaining the ultimate, the ultimate implementation deadline of 15 years from March 2022, which was when those approvals happened. Without amendments, modified milestones, the development agreement and disposition and development agreement would terminate in March of this year. These are the 10 internal milestones that would be amended and the relative timelines, as well as a drawing of the project to build out. The milestone extensions would be granted under two conditions. The first is that steady progress be made on the formation of the project's assessment district or an equivalent funding source, something like a CFD is likely to be created. And secondly, biannual written reports be submitted by the developer to the city, tracking economic conditions relevant to the project, so we can understand the conditions and how they are trending. The amendments to the DA and master plan would keep the overall development agreement timeline, so 15 years or until 2037. Would keep the currently approved design and scope of the proposed development. It would maintain the approved DDA. It would maintain the approved DDA, and it would provide the opportunity for the construction of housing units over the course of the city's current housing element cycle. In conclusion, the proposed amendments only would affect the schedule of the project. I now want to invite Representative from the developer, Mr. O'Hara, to speak on behalf of the project. And as Director Tai mentioned, following Mr. O'Hara's presentation, I will be available, as will Mr. Buckley and Mr. Tai, for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, so we have 5 minutes and 20 seconds remaining.
It's going to be very brief.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Ezzie Ashcraft, members of the city council, and staff. I'm Mike O'Hara, Director of Forward Planning for Tim Lewis Communities, here representing North Waterfront Cove LLC. Pleased to ring in the new year here with you tonight. First, I'd like to express my extreme gratitude to your staff and my appreciation for their time and efforts to consider our request for these critical amendments to the master plan and development agreement. We are working together, figuring out ways to work through what has been and continues to be an extremely difficult market to navigate. As you know, it's not the same world or the same real estate market that we had when you approved this project in 2022. The staff report, which was, I thought, very well-written and comprehensive, does a great job of highlighting the many differences between the conditions then and today. It's important to recognize that we're not alone. This project is not alone in facing a difficult market. Projects around the Bay Area and the state are having difficulty getting built in this economic environment. And projects that are getting built are struggling. Home builders face large concessions to buyers to purchase their homes, slow pace of sales. Apartment developers face high financing costs, lower rents, and slow absorption. A lot of that's detailed, again, in the staff report. Despite that economic environment, we have nevertheless funded and completed the complicated and lengthy unusual steps to finalize the exchange agreement approvals with the state, working closely with city staff throughout the process. Together, we shepherded the agreement through to execution by the governor. We got, actually, an act of Congress, some legislation passed, and finally, we completed the validation action. All of those pieces are vitally critical to making this project ultimately viable. But as has probably been made very clear to you, that viability also requires a willing market and the right economic conditions, conditions that have not existed over the past few years and don't exist today. We've been at this now for over 12 years on Ensignal Terminals. And tonight, faced with an uncertain and still bumpy road, we ask for the city's support and cooperation through this tough time. We very much value our partnership with the city, and we know very well how critically important this project is to the city. These amendments will give us time to complete the next steps necessary to get the project underway and ultimately built, and we look forward to completing the transformation of the northern waterfront with you. So we respectfully request your approval of these amendments, and I'm also available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. And Steph, was there anything you wanted to add, or you've completed yours? Mr. Tai, nothing for you? Okay. Come back up. I think Mr. Tai is going to have a few words. Please.
Thank you. I just really want to wrap this up by underscoring this project. Went through many years of public community outreach, many council meetings. And the unit count represents roughly 11% of the city's housing goal over the next remaining, what, six and a half years? So it is an important project for the city, but at the same time, the city council granting this extension, we're not giving up any community benefit. It is just really trying to make this project more viable. So that's why Steph is coming for you with a recommendation to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tai. All right, are there any clarifying questions of staff or Mr. O'Hara before we go to public comment? I should ask, Madam Clerk, is there a public comment in this item?
There is one remote.
Okay, that's fine. Any clarifying questions before we go to our discussion, which will follow the public comment?
Sure.
Councilmember Desag?
It's more of a confirmation, and I want to preface this by saying that I had submitted the question in email form to city staff, who have provided a response, which is, by the way, posted on the public agenda for this item. But because some people might not be aware of it, I think it would be great to go over it. So I just want to make sure to confirm that the agreement that was struck on January 18th, 2022, in, I guess the term that we had used was mapping? That the agreement regarding mapping 50%, that 50% of the non-town homes would be mapped, i.e., for potential sales. That is still in place. And before, that's a question, but let me give you a quick background. The reason why I'm asking is because in looking at the staff report posted prior to tonight, there was reference to the master plan, but the master plan did not reference that January 18th agreement. Now, the response given to me subsequently is that while it might not be in the master plan, it is in the developer disposition agreement, so that's good. And so I just want to confirm that that agreement with regard to the 50% of the non-town homes being mapped for sale is still in place. And I want to also point this out, because this was something that council member Trish Howard Spencer really championed. So that's the question.
Okay, so who would like to answer that? Mr. Toma? I'm going to call on you.
And thank you for the question, Councilmember Desag. So yes, the language that was part of that motion in the council meeting in 2022 did make it into the DDA. It is not in the master plan, and that's in Section 9.2. And so the language is that the developer shall ensure that at least 50% of the non-town home market rate units shall be mapped throughout the subdivision process to allow for homeownership. And the developer shall ensure that all residential buildings are designed with operable windows, which was the other part of that motion, as you may recall, to the extent allowed under the building code to facilitate natural airflow and ventilation. So that, it is in the DDA, and that DDA, you know, the developer is obligated to meet all of those requirements, so.
Great. It's my understanding that it's better to be in the DDA. Would that be correct, Steph? Steph is nodding their heads. Well, thank you.
And Steph, if we could have audible reports, audible replies, it's really hard to take down those nods of the head.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Toma, before you leave, you said that guaranteed that at least 50% of the, was it market rate homes?
50% of the non-town home units.
Non-town home, okay. So what is, is there any income designation for that? Is it affordable, missing middle, or?
I will refer to Director Tai, because there's pieces that were included in the original DDA, and then this was added upon it, so.
Help us out, Mr. Tai.
Yeah, so actually, two separate topics. But just to address Councilmember Desag's question, the requirement for sale units is actually not unique to this project. We have other development projects in Alameda, and the way we would implement that is basically require a condo map prior to issuance of a building permit. And so we have other development projects in town that have the same requirement. And whether those units are affordable or not, or deed-restricted, would be separate, would be subject to their inclusionary requirement as applied to the master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Other clarifying questions of the staff report? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. I was not on the city council when the development agreement was entered into, and I, but I was on when the city council supported and the California legislature approved the tidelands exchange for this parcel. And so what I wanted to get a little clarification about was, when this property was conveyed and when the multi-housing development agreement was entered into, was it anticipated? Was that included? Was it anticipated that the tidelands exchange would be part of the agreement? Or did that come afterwards? Was it part of the initial agreement? I see that Mr. O'Hara has an idea there.
Mr. Buckley, come on up and introduce yourself, please. Hi.
Good evening, Stephen Buckley. I'm the Planning Services Manager. And my understanding is that in 2018, there was an approval that did not include the exchange agreement, and that was part of the problem of getting that project off the ground. And so in recognition of the complexity of having the city parcel, the tidelands parcel essentially taking a big bite out of the middle of the property, that in 2022 is when the tidelands exchange master plan was drafted, which then allowed for the same number of units and commercial space to happen, but over a more logical area of land and also better public benefits in terms of the trail and park space that could be around the perimeter of the entire property.
So thank you. To be clear, then, the establishment of the exchange, the tidelands exchange actually improved the value and the ability to develop on this property by making certain, making the site more accessible and available for homes and retail than it had been prior to the exchange?
Yes, and that was discussed at the time.
Thank you.
Any further clarifying questions? Okay, let's go to our public comments. Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Okay, we have, oh no. My Zoom has disappeared. Nope, here it is, sorry. We have one speaker, Todd Hickman.
Welcome, Speaker Hickman.
Another giveaway to a developer at the expense of Alameda residents. When the city exceeds its authority, which it has, there is no statute of limitations. The city has no authority as the lead sequel agency, failing to effectively certify. I know there has been significant community outcry over the atrocities committed against this neighborhood and surrounding area and the residents' enjoyment of such. The concepts that the city is pushing in this agenda item are misguided in the least and actually appear to be violations of law. Another claim of sequel exemption, amending a master plan and development agreement, cheating the residents and affected parties out of the sequel process, again. Another conclusion for the sequel process without actually going through the sequel process. Mr. Baller, aren't you supposed to protect the public? Isn't that your specialty, consumer protection? So once again, we see the city of Alameda running amok and going way outside its bounds of regulatory authority. And again, I really would just like to remind all the affected parties out there that the city of Alameda has no regulatory authority as the lead sequel agency, and therefore, we have no statute of limitations, zero statute of limitations. So anybody can bring action against this project, sequel action against this project at any time, because once again, the city of Alameda has failed to follow the proper sequel process. And once again, the city of Alameda said there is no sequel issues with this project. I mean, how is it that all of these projects just have no sequel concepts, you know? No consequences whatsoever. Over there on Saratoga, we're building buildings on parking lots, and we're turning buildings into parking lots. And again, there's no sequa consequences. Everything is exempt from sequa, just like this whole project. Item 7A, sequel exemption, again. I mean, for real? Mr. Baller, what are we going to do about this? I mean, the only thing I'm really confused about here, Mr. Baller, and how we're going to move forward with this, is are you going to be able to do your job and protect the consumer, protect us? Or are you going to have to recuse yourself due to conflict of interest? I think that's the most confusing part about you jumping into this arena and now being on the city council. I think we have a major, major complicated situation here. But either way, somebody has to do something, because again, when the city exceeds its authority, which it has, there is no statute of limitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
I think I clicked the wrong thing. That was our only speaker.
All right, with that, we will close public comment on item 7A, and let's go to council discussion. Anybody want to start? Is want too strong a verb? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Pryor.
I don't have any questions, but just based on the questions that I think Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Desag and Mayor Ezzie Ashcraft had shared earlier, and just going through the presentation and reading the staff report earlier. So, you know, the economic circumstances do suggest that any developer would have similar issues, so the request does appear to be in good faith, and my concern that it might be a bigger risk, you know? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, always I tell public speakers, make it yours.
You know, to, you know, to, I don't know, to do anything else. And the long-term commitment hasn't changed, and, you know, we will consider to get updates every six months. So it just seems like a reasonable request.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Bowler, what have you got to say?
It stands out to me just that staff has put some time and work into this and tried to figure out a judgment call, which is, is this project destined to go forward with this developer? And do they have faith in that, in the work that's been done so far, which has been substantial? And yes, there's substantial more work to be done. If you look at how it was originally constructed, there were milestones built in, right? So certain progress points where you would hope that the city had a tight rein on things, and the city did. That's the way they set up originally. And in this proposal for extension of the timelines, it doesn't change the overall timeline of the project. It just changes the pace at which certain things happen. But it builds in also with, like, for example, the requirement of steady progress, that there be additional safeguards in place, additional reviews by the city as it goes, because the city appears to me to be, continue to be concerned about making sure that there is that quote "steady progress," right? So the milestones are being adjusted based on an economic situation. There was an economic situation that happened when the agreement was originally formulated. It looked a certain way, and then things changed, right? The economy has changed. So I do think that we should put a lot of precedence on the city's work in this case and their judgment call.
Thank you for that. Councilmember, which on my periphery, would I just go next? Councilmember Desag, go for it.
Well, thank you very much. We've come to this point through a variety of ways. There are several issues here. First and foremost is the substantive issue regarding extending a certain timeline by three years. But in addition to the substantive issue that's in front of us, there's also the issue of the product itself and the give and take that was involved in putting together the product that you have here. So it's not just a residential product to many people, but I think to many people, it's also, you know, reclaiming the waterfront, beautifying certain parts of it. Not everyone agreed with the, what was before us back in 2022, but I think, you know, the fact that the developer had worked with city council members, including then-council member Trish Howard Spencer, I think that's something to be honored. And so, you know, I think the decision, in terms of the substance of what was decided on in January 18th, 2022, and then two weeks later, February 1st, I think, of 2022, that's still here, as well as those trade-offs, such as what we discussed earlier, the mapping of the 50% of the non-town home as marked for sale. And I think that was a decision that council and the developer and city staff struck on that night, and I think that should be honored, and I do think that what's in front of us honors that. And so while not everyone agreed on 2022, you know, I certainly am supportive of this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Desag. Councilmember Jensen?
I just want to appreciate staff for the hard work on this. These types of negotiations are something that I know that it happens occasionally. The economy is not always going to be perfect and ideal for development, but we do have, we've had a partnership with Tim Lewis Communities, with this developer, to work with us and to facilitate the establishment of the Del Monte- of the Del Monte Development, the Star Harbor. And that has been a boon for that site and for that part of Alameda. And so, I certainly will support this extension, and I hope that Tim Lewis Communities and the LLC will continue to work diligently to find a way to begin the project and to build the sorely needed housing at that site.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. And so, I want to thank everyone for the time and effort that has gone into putting the report together, working on the various negotiations. And Acting City Manager Waldrich shared my questions and the responses to them with the council. But what, and I have known Mr. O'Hara for a long time and appreciate the work. And Councilmember Jensen just referenced the Star Harbor project of the Del Monte Building. That, of course, was sold by the Tim Lewis Communities to a developer that did then take over and complete the project. But man, just getting it to that point took a lot of effort. So, what, and I think that might happen here. I mean, we don't know, but I know that Tim Lewis Communities has poured an awful lot of time and money into this project, but we do have very uncertain financial conditions. I mean, we have a week from today, the inauguration of a new administration in Washington. I have no idea what that is going to mean for the economy, and anyone who thinks that they do, well, they must have like a six cents or something. But, so, for the timing alone, I think it makes sense to agree to these extensions. What I am concerned about in this council, Mr. Dayes will remember, we want to avoid land banking. We have certainly experienced that with other developers. At other times, we've tried to build safeguards into agreements to avoid that. I think we've got that here, because we're not extending that final date when everything comes due. But to that point, and I said this in my questions, I want to make sure that a subsequent buyer, I'm trying to be a realist and look at this with clear eyes, that a subsequent buyer isn't disadvantaged. So, I will look to our staff, who's a lot smarter and more experienced than I am in these things, to just always keep that in mind, that this is, it'll be perhaps a real estate transaction at some point. And so, are we putting a future developer at a disadvantage by then saying, "Look, there are all these things that needed to get done in a 15-year term, and they didn't, and now you've got seven and a half years to complete them?" But staff, like I said, they know what they're doing, and so just keep your eye on that ball if you would. And then, the other thing is, I mean, I can't wait for this project to be completed, because we've done so much in the city with completing the, I mean, extending the Bay Trail. It's almost complete, and this property will be a very significant part of that. It's this wonderful waterfront location. There's a lot of conditions out there that are dangerous to the public. So, just, I ride by on the bike trail, but I don't go down that road. So, just, I hope that we're making sure that the fences are good, that the public is being kept out, and we keep an eye on, you know, fences not being cut and people coming onto the property. Because I would love to see some of the conditions in the redlined master plan that we've now, you know, pushed the completion date out years, a few years, not, you know, not decades or anything. But I just want to make sure that until we get to that point where we can start doing the work, taking down the structures, doing all the site preparation, that we're protecting the public. So, that, those are my asks. And otherwise, as I said, I think a lot of time and effort has gone into this. And if we weren't to vote to allow this project to go forward, what would that look like? We would be going back to square one, starting over again, looking for another buyer, developer, well, we wouldn't be looking for the buyer because it's not our property. But anyway, I think it is the right decision at the right time for this time, and we'll know more when we know more. This, of course, is an item that needs four votes, so I'm hearing, sounds like we've got the math there. So, anything further before I call for a motion? Councilmember Dayes?
I just want to quickly say also a special thank you to our staff for providing, you know, the substantive and extensive responses to the questions that we raised. And I sent mine on Sunday night, so the fact that you guys kind of responded, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We should all echo thanks to the staff. Okay, would you like to make a motion, Councilmember?
Yes, I would like to move approval of staff's recommendation.
All right, on item 7A, and seconded by the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Pryor. Any further comments, discussion? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your good work. Thanks, Mr. O'Hara. All right, let's move on to item 7B. Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item, please?
Introduction of ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease for a portion of Building 169 with the Pacific Pinball Museum, a 501(c)(3) California nonprofit organization located at 1680 Viking Street, Suite 101 at Alameda Point, Alameda, California, for a term of 36 months. This item requires four affirmative votes. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, this section is categorically exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Secret Guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, and 15061b3, common sense.
Good evening. Ms. Thornlyman, want to introduce yourself and whoever else you'd like to introduce?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Abby Thornlyman. I'm the Director of Base for Use and Economic Development. And you've already heard from her, but I did just for the benefit of the new members, want to formally introduce Alicia Strauk, who is our Base for Use Manager overseeing leasing, asset management, and property management for Alameda Point. No small feat. So, Ms. Strauk will give the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome back, Ms. Strauk.
Thank you so much. So, what I'll do is, since I've already been introduced, I am very pleased to be here tonight to introduce this ordinance to you. So, Building 169 is located at 1680 Viking Street in Alameda Point. It's a single-story slab-on-grade steel-frame warehouse building, and it was constructed back in 1946. It is currently divided into two suites by a concrete firewall that basically goes down the middle of the building. So, Pacific Pinball Museum has been occupying Suite 101, and Suite 102, the adjacent suite, has been vacant since our former tenant, William Sonoma, moved out in April of 2024. And we are currently marketing Suite 102 for lease.
You heard it here.
You heard it. But Building 169 is also located just adjacent to what we believe to be the most probable footprint for near-term development in the Enterprise District. And I wish I had a larger map to kind of show you that area, but 169 is sort of adjacent to what we think will be the next footprint if it comes forward for development there, just because of the proximity to newer infrastructure. So, Pacific Pinball Museum is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and it was founded in 2002. Its mission is to inspire interest in science and art and history through pinball, and to also preserve and promote this important part of American culture. A Pacific Pinball Museum actually has a physical museum that you can visit that is located at 1510 Webster Street in Alameda, and it's really amazing. They have over 100 pinball machines that you can play when you're there, and they range in ages from the '40s all the way up to present day. So, the lease premises. So, Suite 101 contains a little over 43,000 square feet of rentable interior space, plus they do have some non-exclusive exterior parking. It is currently used as a warehouse. As I said, the museum is located over on Webster Street, so this facility is just a warehouse and a repair facility for the Pinball Museum. They have, as I said, been a tenant at Alameda Point since 2006, so they're a longstanding tenant of ours. And they actually relocated into Building 169 in 2016 under a lease agreement. So, they have been in that space for quite a bit of time. When that lease that they signed in 2016 expired, it expired in the spring of 2024, we executed a short-term license agreement with them so that they could remain on-site while we worked out negotiating this mutually agreeable lease agreement. So, that's really why we're going from a license agreement now back to a lease. So, I did want to highlight that Pacific Pinball does currently sub-license a portion of the space to Navier, and that's a company that's involved in the development of electro-hydrofoiling watercraft. Navier pays a monthly fee for the sublicense to Pacific Pinball Museum and also shares in some of the utilities. And Navier's sub-tenancy with Pacific Pinball is coterminous with the lease with the city. So, what I'm trying to say is, if Pacific Pinball's lease terminates, Navier would also, their occupancy would also be terminated. But from our conversations to date, we believe that Navier will continue to be a subtenant of Pacific Pinball in that building. So, the lease terms. The proposed monthly rent under the new lease is 45 cents per square foot, so that comes out to about $19,510 per month. That's income to the city. We built in 3% annual escalations over the three years of this new proposed lease. And as I said, the premises include the warehouse space plus some non-exclusive parking, but we were careful that it doesn't allow for any exterior storage. So, they can't store materials, vehicles, long-term outside of the warehouse. The lease also has language in it that allows for profit sharing with the city of the income Pacific Pinball gets from subleases. And so, we get about 50% of their income, their revenue, above what they pay to us in base rent. The new lease agreement also includes a one-time right to terminate for both parties. So, either the city can terminate it early with six months' notice, or Pacific Pinball can. And we really need that to keep some flexibility as sort of the development of the Enterprise District comes forward, and also as Pacific Pinball continues to kind of explore what's going to be best for the continuation of their museum. So, fair market value rent for warehouse spaces in Alameda, in Alameda Point, really ranged from about 70 cents to 85 cents per square foot. As I said, this lease is starting at 45 cents per square foot, and that really, that lower rate reflects an adequate fair market value for the shorter-term duration, and also for our ability to terminate this with six months' notice, to give us flexibility with the Enterprise District. So, a recommendation is to approve the introduction of the ordinance to execute this lease with Pacific Pinball Museum. And just for our newer council members, if the motion to approve this first reading of the ordinance is adopted tonight, I will be returning to the next city council meeting with a final reading of this ordinance on your consent calendar. So, you'll see me again on this topic. And with that, I just wanted to answer any questions you may have, and I also wanted to let you know that there is a representative from Pacific Pinball Museum who is going to speak during public comment.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Strauk. So, before we go to public comment, do we have clarifying questions from the council? I had emailed a couple of questions, and I think you touched on, Ms. Strauk, the difference between the license agreement gave you even more flexibility? And so, just tell us why we're going from a license agreement back to a lease?
From a license to a lease again. So, we're going from a license to a lease because the lease that they had from 2016 expired in the spring of 2024. And so, administratively, we can exercise a short-term license, and we did that because we wanted to be able to keep them in occupancy while we negotiated this longer-term lease agreement with them.
Right. And then, as far as, and I understand your rationale for the much lower, almost 50% lower price, lease price per square foot, will that, do you think that will disadvantage you when you're negotiating lease prices with other possible tenants?
I think this is a special circumstance in that we have that six-month notice to terminate this lease.
Okay.
And, you know, that's a risk for a business, but it's something that we felt was really important for the city to have, because, you know, we're seeing, as you said before, we don't know what the economic future is going to be, and we want to be flexible and nimble if something comes forward in the Enterprise District.
Okay. And then, you referenced Navier, and some of us know about Navier. It's an exciting new company. But when this lease, whenever it ends with Pacific Pinball Machine, then Navier is out of a home, too. Are we doing something to find them a new home in Alameda Point?
Yeah, I wanted to reassure everyone. We've met with Navier.
And I'll just say, I don't want to alarm the city attorney because of, you know, noticing requirements and all that, but because it's part of the staff report, I'm asking that question. Okay.
Yes. We've met with Navier, like we do with any business, to be able to talk to them about opportunities we have at Alameda Point to lease or purchase property. We also actually worked with them recently on a license agreement to give them better access to Sea Plain Lagoon. So, we're in contact with them. They know we're here, and we're just as excited about them as you are.
All right. Good. I'm quite excited. Thank you. Okay, any other clarifying questions, council, before we go to public comment? Seeing then, let's go to public comment.
Evan Philippi?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, everybody. I really appreciate-
Go ahead and raise that microphone so you're not leaning over.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the city council tonight. My name is Evan Philippi. I've lived in Alameda's West End for 22 years. I have two kids in West End schools, and I'm really honored to be the Pacific Pinball Museum's Executive Director. As mentioned before, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) museum in our 22nd year here in Alameda. We were founded in Alameda. Most of our employees and volunteers are also from Alameda, and we are really happy to partner closely with the city for over two decades, and especially for that space on the point. Currently, we donate hundreds of passes to other local nonprofit organizations, schools, and organizations each year to assist with fundraising. We run several different equity programs to make sure visiting our museum, which is a nonprofit, is available for everybody in Alameda and the East Bank. We partner closely with other organizations, museums, like the Hornet and the California Historical Radio Society, and we are having a fundraiser for the Alameda Boys and Girls Club at the museum next month that we'll hope a lot of people come to. Item 7B is really important to the museum. The bulk of our collection, which is actually the world's largest pinball collection, encompassing all eras from the 1880s to the 2020s, is in the warehouse that's out on the point right now. The, it is critical to the operation of the museum, the close proximity. We're able to move games back and forth, create new exhibits, store games, and have volunteers float between the museum and the annex, which is what we call the warehouse out on the Naval Air Station. So, the proximity is really key to us. I'd like to let everybody know, we are open every Tuesday through Sunday, and we encourage all to visit our unique museum on Webster Street with the most pinball in one location in California, over 100 games, and that is also stretching from the 1940s to the 2020s. It's really fun to come to our museum and watch pinball evolve over time, kind of with the American lexicon of different music, colors, interests, and art styles. You can kind of put everything into a certain era, and it's really wonderful to see in one location. You can learn a lot more about us at pacificpinball.org, and we dearly appreciate all the work and partnership of everyone in the Base Redevelopment Agency. They've partnered with us really closely. They've been really responsive, and they're just the most wonderful people to work with, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We think they're wonderful, too. Mr. Philippi, our communications director, Sarah Henry, is back in the audience, and she'll wave her hand when you turn around. But if you would share with her the information about the fundraiser you're doing for the Boys and Girls Club, I think she'll help spread the word, so.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Henry. Our next speaker?
Is remote. Alex Spear?
Welcome, Speaker Spear.
Good evening. I just want to say that I fully support the Pinball Museum, and it's grand fun to take kids to. And I think you should vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment on item 7B, and I'll open it up to council comment. Why don't we just start on my left and work from left to right? Councilmember Jensen?
My only comment is that I'm completely in support of this lease. I think that the Pinball Museum is a tremendous asset and a resource for Alameda. I've been there several times myself. I have shared passes with my, the board that I am on, Youth Alive in Oakland, underserved, and people, especially youth, that are affected by violence. And they, I've always heard many, many positive things in return about what a great experience it was to visit the museum, as I can attest to myself, so. as, as I can attest to myself. So thank you, um, to the Pinball Museum and to the executive director for, for providing this great, this great community benefit and resource here in Alameda.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pryor.
So I was just going to say the Pinball Museum is a unique and family-friendly nonprofit establishment. And this lease, um, agreement, uh, for the storage facility seems fair. And, um, I'm glad we can continue the partnership and, uh, this little piece of history. And, um, yeah, and I like the flexibility for both parties. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowler.
Just echoing my colleague's comments that the Pacific Pinball Museum is such an institution in this community and that for the city to be, you know, in partnership in terms of trying to support the arts in this way is really important. You know, this is not just any business. It's a nonprofit and it's a one that has a real track history with us. And the flexibility that the, uh, that the lease provides so that we can do economic development when it's appropriate is, um, quite a concession. And, and I think it justifies the, the lower cost.
Thank you. Councilman Desoc.
Well, thank you. This, to me, looks like a twofer, not only Pacific Pinball Museum, uh, but also Navier, if that's how you say it. So I think the residents, um, of Alameda certainly benefit twofold.
Thank you. And I am certainly in support. I, um, never cease to be amazed and really inspired by the community spirit, the volunteers that we have. Cause these organizations, these nonprofits, they often are operating on a shoestring budget. They just couldn't do what they do, um, without volunteer support. And then with that, the return on investment is so great because they provide enjoyment to, really, to people of all ages and, um, and beyond. So, um, kudos to staff for putting this, um, this agreement together. Please find everybody happy homes and forever homes, um, eventually. But I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Desoc. It seems like a nice twofer and I think it makes lots of sense. And this again is another item, just for the benefit of the public. When the council is voting on either the sale or lease of public lands, and that's what this is, um, then we need four affirmative votes. And I've been doing the math in my head and I think we've got them. But with that, I will ask for a motion to approve, um, this ordinance. And as Ms. Struck, um, indicated, it will come back to us for a second reading. And then I believe it goes into effect thirty days after the second reading. Is that correct? Someone say something affirmatively into the microphone, Mr. Jensen?
Yes, at this.
Or that's the city clerk, whoever. Yes. Okay. So I'm with that. Is that a motion from you, Councilmember Jensen? You were leaning forward. Okay. Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Bowler. Although, any further discussion? I don't think so. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Of course not. This is unanimous council tonight. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right. Let's move on to item seven C. Madam Kirk, will you introduce that item while we change the cast?
Recommendation to accept an update on the city's code enforcement program. This action does not constitute a project as defined in California Environmental Quality Act Guideline, section one five three seven eight, and therefore no further sequel analysis is required.
Thank you. And we welcome back Mr. Tai. Would you like to reintroduce yourself?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Alan Tai, Planning, Building, Transportation Director. Uh, I've been waiting very patiently to, for tonight because, um, this is really our department's first update on the Building Division and Code Enforcement Program in five years. And in the past year, I think staff has made, our staff has worked very hard and we've made great strides in, um, process improvements and to be able to respond to the needs of the community. And I want to thank the city council and also the support from our city manager's office for the support and guidance and providing us with the resources to do our job. But with that, I would like to introduce our building official, Oscar Davalos, who will be, uh, going over the details.
Thank you. And you didn't have to be too patient tonight because, I mean, we're moving at warp speed relatively speaking. Um, Mr. Tai, I heard a rumor that you might need a little more than ten minutes. This is kind of a meaty report. Do you, and Mr. Davalos, I should ask you, how much time would you, come on up? How much time would you like? In the microphone would be really great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I would appreciate an extra five minutes if I may.
Of course. And the way we do that, council, because the council rules state that staff reports get ten minutes, but with a vote of four, which I'm really confident I can get tonight, um, with a vote of four, we can extend this to fifteen minutes. Is that realistic? Fifteen minutes is enough?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
You want twenty? Fifteen is good?
One would be fine. Move additional time.
Okay. So we have a motion to add ten minutes to the, um, the staff report time, presentation tonight. It's been moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Um, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That was unanimous. So take it away and welcome. And you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, my name is Oscar Davalos and I serve as your chief building official. I started here about a year ago and one of the first things that I was recommended was to enhance the way we do our business, both in the Building Division, which includes the code enforcement. So because I like to be very transparent in everything that we do, we wanted to come back and provide you this update. The last time we did this update was five years ago. And considering that we have two new council members and, you know, I'm approaching my first year of service, that we wanted to provide you not just the, the update, but also an overview of the Building Division as a whole. My presentation tonight is, uh, is divided in two sections. The first section will be a brief overview of the, uh, Building Division operations. And the second part will be the update of your code enforcement program. Uh, we are part of a larger scale. You know, we're part of the Planning, Building, Transportation Department who happens to have five divisions. We are the largest of those divisions out of the thirty-four members of the Planning, Building, Transportation. We have nineteen staff members, three consulting firms that handle the plan check and other services. And also, um, next week, we're going to have a new plan check architect starting to enhance the plan check services as well. So our, uh, Building Division, uh, with the nineteen members is divided into five sections. One is the Office of the Building Official, which is the regulatory entity for the city to enforce building safety. And I oversee the divisions, uh, which includes the Plan Check Section, the Permit Center. And the Permit Center, I want to mention that we also handle processes for the fire department. You know, the permit and the, the, uh, plan check. Uh, we also coordinate the, the plan check citywide and also the special event permits. And those all done at the Permit Center. On the inspection units, we handle all the inspections citywide, but also respond to emergency car crashes, fires, and things to do assessment. And on one of the parts of the, um, presentation, I'm going to focus on, on safety, safety related to emergency response. And last but not least is our code enforcement unit, uh, which is comprised of three individuals, as code enforcement supervisor and two officers. Oh, what happened?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Okay.
As I mentioned, you know, we did this last year, uh, five years ago. And so, uh, just to sho- showcase a little bit of what we do in the code enforcement division, uh, this program was actually established in nineteen ninety-seven to preserve the housing stock and also alleviate some of the issues with blith and fire prevention. Now, since then, and thanks to the recommendations from council, the program has evolved to cover other, uh, other items in the city that are considered public nuisances like graffiti, you know, um, overgrown vegetation, things like that, you know, vacant properties and, uh, gas leaf blowers. So, um, uh, the code enforcement officers, you know, throughout the year receive complaints and they investigate this, uh, serve notices of violation, notice and orders. And sometimes we have to resource, uh, to the assistance of our city attorney's office to obtain administrative inspection warrants and to conduct business. However, we recognize that we were not able to do a program like this as efficient as it is if we didn't have the collaboration and the support of the city council, the, the city manager's office, the city attorney. So everybody that is involved is what makes us part of a successful code enforcement program. But one of the things that we emphasize is on being responsive. You know, in the past, I, I, I want to admit that we didn't have good credit because our response was not as efficient as it should be. So we have improved little by little and we plan to do even better this, this year, twenty twenty-five. So, uh, one of the enhancements that we've done through innovation is something that the council recommended in the past. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to showing that. And the last part of it is the funding. Uh, currently, our funding comes from building permit fees, which cover seventy-five percent of the program. And the other twenty-five comes from the general fund. Um, I just want to showcase this collaboration with our public works. Uh, I want to be clear that this is something that is going to be continuously done because sometimes we go and address a situation and then there's other issues involved that gives us, you know, the ability to go back and do it. And we plan to do this long-term until we gain compliance because we were going to do a project on the streets and then we had all this storage in the public right away. So we requested our, our city engineer to give us the ability, deputize us to serve as a, as a code enforcement officer for them for this particular issue. And we were successful at getting everything clear up to do our, uh, street project. Now, recently, we noticed that all the storage came back into the area. So we're going to continue to work with the, with the owner for a long-term solution.
Uh, Mr. Davalos, just back to that photo. Is that the same site?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, this one, it was a, um, collaboration with a rent program. Another item that was a mandate, uh, from our city manager and from the council was to collaborate with the other entities in the city. We have a great relationship with a rent program, you know, and they have been very resourceful for us in our code enforcement, uh, items. This one was a call from a, a client related to a family living in two storage sheds. Uh, the family had two small children and they were living in, in very deplorable conditions. So, uh, with the assistance with the, uh, rent program, we were able to relocate them. They were compensated for the relocation and I ordered the structures demolished so avoid this situation from moving forward. We also requested the assistance from our police department because we suspected that there was some illegal activity, perhaps like human trafficking. And they were able to conduct an investigation and, and made it clear that there was none of that. But we, uh, we saw signs in there that looked like there was something like that. So we, that, this is the reason why we're like very thankful for the partnership that we have throughout the city. Our job is simple because of you. You know, back in the day, nineteen ninety-nine, uh, you approved a priority system which gives us the ability to define what a priority was and the time to comply. And so we put this in our code enforcement manual policies and procedure and it's, it lives there like a Bible. So for us, it's really important, you know, to get your feedback. And so, um, as a future enhancement, we're going to be expanding on the list, providing a little bit more clarity for the officers, but we'll bring that back to the council for consideration once we have a chance to review it and, and then make it more comprehensive. This is, uh, second part of the list, which will address the medium, low, secondary and not immediate priority, uh, for code enforcement. Now, this, uh, Madam Mayor, this is an innovation that came from the council. You know, I believe that some of you attended a conference and, and they were showcasing something like this, which is, uh, notice of violation that is actually a door hanger. So, you know, we, uh, we got the idea from you guys and we ran with it. It's been very successful. Now, I really want to mention, n- not because you're our mayor, but we receive a lot of, uh, a lot of calls from your office. And we have gone to investigate some cases during the last fire season. And we discovered about seventeen properties in the same area that had overgrown vegetation. So we were able to s- successfully close these cases in a couple of weeks. So for that, thank you so much.
Aye, thank you.
Because the funding that we currently have, uh, covers seventy-five percent of the operations, uh, through the building permit fees, we did a study to see how many of cases were actually building-related versus non-building-related. And so we actually came to the conclusion, and I'll show you the data on the future slides, uh, that the numbers are now around fifty-fifty, you know, uh, land use violations and versus, uh, uh, building-related code enforcement cases. So for that reason, we considered that in the future, we're going to do a fee study to recover the cost of doing business and the possibility of coming back to council to request additional funding from the general fund. Because the last update was five years ago, I wanted to give you an overview of the, uh, caseload. And so we noticed that in twenty twenty-three, the caseload went up really high. And twenty twenty-four, we expect that, that workload to double this year because we have, uh, a very proactive enforcement program. And we want to make sure that, that we deliver the results for the city. This one, this slide right here shows you how we, uh, the, that number of cases and the type of cases that we have. Out of the five hundred and thirty-five cases, surprisingly, a hundred and forty-seven came from the gas leaf blowers. And we had graffiti, whits, trash, retaining walls, you know, lead paint. And so, uh, we, uh, we were able to run the numbers and discover that, you know, fifty or a little bit over fifty percent is, uh, related items that are not, uh, code violations for building. So another item that we discovered once we were doing a review of our fees and also in collaboration with some of members of the public is that we realized that some of the fees that we have are extremely high for the services that we want to, like, obtain from the public. You know, part of the code enforcement is also resiliency. And for us, it's important that the people are not deterred from doing like seismic upgrades or things like that. So we're going to be looking into those fees and adjust them as necessary. And we'll come back to the council with our recommendation. Additionally, you know, with sufficient funding for our code enforcement operations, uh, we plan to do, uh, some upgrades that some would not cost anything. It would just be staff time, like the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, as I was doing research on our ordinances, uh, as the head of code enforcement, I discovered that there are certain things that we need to have in place for, you know, easier transparency and easier tools for our enforcement mechanisms for our staff. So adopting the International Property Maintenance Code customized to suit the needs of the city will be great. It'll be basically like a little guide for the customers and also for our officers to do enforcement. We also want to revise the code enforcement priorities and present them to you for update and approval. And we want to establish a code enforcement abatement fund. I sincerely appreciate the extra time because I want to showcase one of the, uh, the cases that we had this last year. Uh, the, our fire department was called to a house where a lady fell down. She was an elderly lady. Unfortunately, the lady passed away that night. And, and when we went inside her home, uh, we discovered that there was a lot of overaccumulation of contents. There was about twenty cats that were dead and, and so we had a, a health hazard condition. So, uh, based on that, we discovered that we didn't have a fund in place to be able to alleviate the situation until we were able to reach out to the family members. Thankfully, uh, because of the persistencies of the officers and, and the neighboring properties, we were able to get ahold of the county, which probate department took over the house and were able to clean the place up without us having to be involved and spend the money. Um, the other part is, uh, to enhance the disaster response. This last time when we had to scare about the tsunami, we discovered that we were not where we need to be for, like, response. So we're working with all the inspectors to get them certified through the California Office of Emergency Services. The majority are, but we want to make sure that we reach out every single member of my staff in the Building Division to be certified. We want to make sure that we're one of the first cities in the area that everyone in the building department is certified to respond in case of emergency. Uh, this last summer, I obtained my certification as a coordinator for emergency response. So I can also deputize members of the public that are architects or engineers that can lend us a hand. Uh, last but not least, uh, we want to provide additional enforcement for the tobacco licensing program. As you know, our planning, building, transportation is responsible for that program. And so because I came in last year, I was already March, I didn't have the opportunity to apply for a grant. But this year I want to do that. I want to apply for a half a million dollars grant from the Department of Justice. So that way the money doesn't come from the city. It comes from the Ju- from the Department of. It comes from the Department of Justice to be able to do more enforcement as far as The recommendation for the council is to accept this update on the city code enforcement program and provide us comments, which, like I mentioned in the past, have been very valuable to us. Before I conclude my presentation, I want to let you know that you're also part of the code enforcement program because not only you provide us the funding, but you provide us constant support. The job is not easy. We get a lot of complaints and a lot of dissatisfied customers, but somebody's got to do the job, so we appreciate your support. I also want to showcase, you know, my coworkers from the city attorney's office have been amazing, police department, fire, you know, everybody, and base reuse, you know, as you know, building 114, that was a place that I deemed unsafe to occupy, and they worked so hard to get it into compliance, so I'm very appreciative for their partnership. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Well done, and you really just used your 15 minutes, not 20, but it was good to have the extra time. Council, do we have any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Okay, we might, oh, yes, Councilmember Jensen.
I have a question about Exhibit 3. One of the categories on Exhibit 3 was public nuisance. You probably don't have to bring it up, but what exactly is a public nuisance?
Can you repeat the question?
It was on, it was in Exhibit 3, I think it was about the fourth page, maybe, of the, it was a public nuisance. It was the categories of code compliance that...
Yeah, so those will be the revised, you know, that's a draft of the revised priorities that we would like to bring to council in the future.
But what exactly is a public nuisance? What, can I have an example?
Yeah, sure. So, for example, you know, like on a high priority case will be work without permit that has electrical wiring in it, or maybe a faulty foundation. Sometimes, you know, the mice go into the attic and chew on the wiring, so that would be like an immediate response that we will have to attend.
I understand that, but I'm, there was a specific category that was public nuisance?
A public nuisance for us is considered, you know, something that is not categorized under the building code, but is considered like noise, or, you know, smoking in public in areas like apartment complexes and things like that, something that is considered in the municipal code as a public nuisance, but not really related to building code.
And later on, in the last, your last, your closing, you mentioned the tobacco, the tobacco ordinance that you wanted to be able to have more ability to comply, to enforce the tobacco ordinance?
So, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, no, is, does, so my question is, does the code compliance also enforce the city's environmental ordinances, like refuse disposal, disposable foodware, things, those types of ordinances?
No, so, the powers that we receive in the code enforcement come from a specific entities, you know, like if you saw the slide that related to work in the public right away, we had to obtain the ability from the city engineer to give us that, to be able to do that. We, with our Public Works Department, we have asked in the past, when we issued the special use permits, related to that, to like food waste and things like that.
Okay, so that would be something that would have to be directly authorized, it sounds like?
Go ahead, city, or Mr. Ty, did you want to comment?
Excuse me, Councilmember Jensen, enforcement of foodware ordinance is handled by the Public Works Department, and solid waste is kind of a separate category.
Thank you. That was my question, and then I have one more question for the building inspector-director, Mr. Davos. I appreciate your examples, the examples that you provided in the slides, and it appears, and I think that you alluded to this, that sometimes this job can be dangerous. Sometimes, when there are code enforcement officers are trying to enforce a building code, or trying to access a building, or trying to serve a notice, or actually when they find out that there are people living in substandard conditions, or those types of things. So, would you, as you, as you're asking and as you're suggesting that the program be improved, is there areas, those are the areas that you also would like to see improvements in terms of safety of your staff?
I really appreciate that question, councilmember. Part of the mandates that we have by the state is to have policies in place to protect the code enforcement officers. And so, when we foresee that the situation is going to escalate, you know, the officers are trained on the escalating techniques, but when we foresee that there's going to be an issue, we leave the scene, you know? Nothing's more important than our safety, and so, we require the services of our police department. Last year, we served three administrative inspection warrants, and they were with us for all three of them. So, we're like really grateful for the cooperation from the rest of the departments.
Thank you, and thank you for you and your staff, all your great work.
My pleasure.
Any other councilmember, Dasek, do you have questions?
Yes, just a clarifying question regarding tobacco, because it looks like in the staff report, the reference to tobacco has to do with tobacco as a retail item. So, does the code enforcement, will it be handling tobacco as it is used in certain areas where it is specifically prohibited? For example, I have received calls regarding people smoking continuously in the outdoor dining seating area along Park Street, in certain parts of Park Street. So, is that a code enforcement issue to deal with repeated tobacco use in specifically prohibited areas?
Thank you for that question, councilmember. So, one of the reasons why we like to request a grant from the state is because we want to have the ability to provide a service where someone can actually respond to all these issues. Right now, we only have two officers in the city, and we were able to do over 1,000 inspections and handle over 500 cases. So, I believe that in order for us to do a more comprehensive program, we need to add more resources to it. And so, instead of having the city pay for that, you know, we want to exercise the rights that we have under a licensing program for the tobacco, because there's a specific penalties when they violate the law, and they also include not only inspecting the businesses that sell tobacco, but also multifamily residents, to make sure that the sign is there, that they have dedicated areas for that. It's a whole program. I was part of the program in the city of San Pablo, and it was very effective.
So, just to be more specific, so if you, in the program that you would ultimately like to have with respect to tobacco, so could there be a tobacco enforcement officer who goes out to, someone says, you know, there's, there is repeated smoking at that outdoor dining area, and right now, there is someone there, would an enforcement person go out there and say, listen?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The code enforcement program, when you receive the grants, as you know, you have to keep track and, you know, and show that you're using this for the enforcement. So, therefore, anything related to tobacco laws and violations will be utilized under that.
Okay. And I just want to make one point, it's not a question. I believe that it's already in our municipal code that you're not allowed to smoke in certain areas, it's just that we don't really catch the people when they do.
It is, but sometimes, you know, the enforcement part comes by making sure that the businesses that are licensed in the city, they do the enforcement. We just need to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Davos. We might call you back, but for now, let's go to public comment. Bless you. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
We do not.
Wow. We will close public comment on Item 7C, and let's go to council comments discussion. This is, you know, we're just going to accept this report, presumably we're going to vote to accept this report. Let's start on my right with you, Councilmember Dasek.
I just want to thank you very much for the report, appreciate it.
All right. Councilmember Bowler.
Thank you so much. I have no other comment.
All right. Vice Mayor Pryor.
So, I want to thank the building division and the city code enforcement team for their tenacity and hard work. You probably meet, and I think you alluded to this, some residents who are feeling frustrated and are facing serious hardship, so I imagine this important work may feel very tough at times, but you keep us all safer physically, mentally, in the long run, and I appreciate all your efforts, and thank you for your thorough report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues. I think that code enforcement is often underappreciated, unfortunately, but it's so necessary, it's so critical, and that the things that a city does is to protect the health and welfare of citizens, and code enforcement is a huge part of that. So, thank you for all your hard work for bringing this report forward, and we'll have an opportunity to provide more discussion and perhaps more resources in the future.
Thank you for that. And so, I just want to make a couple of comments, and thank you very much, that was a great report. And, you know, isn't it astounding to think that Mr. Davos hasn't even been here one year, and he has accomplished so much? You really did hit the ground running, and you're still running. So, thank you so much for that. I can't see, can't wait to see what you do when you've been here more than a year. It does strike me from both reading the report and listening to you that code enforcement is understaffed, and so, it's great that you're going out for a grant, and we'll look forward to hearing more about that. But to my council colleagues, we have a priority setting workshop coming up in February, right, Madam Clerk? Early February, and that is preceding the discussions about the budget. So, I've talked to our city manager, Jen Ott, about this before. We, there may have been a time when we could fund this operation from permit fees, but times have changed, things have become more expensive, and there is a limit to how much we can charge for permit fees, and I know you hear from me when I hear from many people who have complaints, but for instance, a contractor who does, I think it's seismic safety inspection work, you know, wrote to me, and I shared the email, but he said, I do this work all over the East Bay, I'm not doing Alameda anymore because your permit fees, the formulation for them are like 50% of the cost of the project, and it's not a very high-ticket project, but it just, that's kind of a showstopper for somebody who's trying to be the contractor doing this work, but that's because of the system that it's baked into. And so, we do have to find funding in the general fund. I mean, grants are great, all the departments who are listening keep applying for those grants, but there's a certain amount for a certain time, if you're hiring someone, it's an ongoing expense, but, you know, there's so many different expenses. So, I just think, council, we need to be ready to look, you know, into the budget, dig in the sofa cushions, find those coins that have, no, we're going to, we're going to find the money. This is very important, it's quality of life, it's health and safety, so we need to do that. And then, I also have, I mean, and I know you do hear from me, just because I hear from people, and I tell people all the time, when I respond and thank them for their email or call or stopping me in the grocery store, you are my eyes and ears around the city because I can't, no one can be everywhere at once unless they have magical powers, which I lack. But doesn't it make sense to have city staff, and not just your staff, Mr. Davos and Mr. Ty, but when public works is out and about, when public safety is out and about, certainly when I'm walking, driving, or, you know, riding my bike, mostly walking and riding my bike because then it's slower, if you see something, if you see something, say something. So, I do get that we are complaint-based, we wait for the complaints to come in, but for instance, maybe a couple of months ago, I highlighted a property that I knew had been involved in a terrible house fire, people lost their lives in it, but it was two years ago, and that property was sitting there in the same state. And so, luckily, you know, I sent the email, and within days, that fencing is up now, and the work is starting to be done, but it went two years. And so, and things like lead abatement, we have older buildings, and when there are lead paint, you know, flaking on the ground, that's of concern, and so, and I do appreciate the attention to the overgrown vegetation because these days in California and elsewhere, it's fire season all year round, and so, we always have to be on guard for potential fire hazards. But can we do something where it's more, and maybe you could come back up to the podium if you would, can we do something more where folks who are city staff can also know that if they see something, they should communicate it to your department?
Actually, we have a list of almost 500 addresses in the city that our building inspector provided us. Some time ago, about a couple of months ago, I asked the building inspectors that, hey, since you guys are all over the city, and I only have two officers, I need you guys to see graffiti, see anything that is blithe, you know, overgrown vegetation, just put it on a list and then give it to us. So, we plan to do all those. This is one of the reasons why I say that the numbers will double or triple this year because we're doing a lot more proactive enforcement. One thing I realized when I was hired with this city, our city is beautiful. You know, I drive across the bridge, and it's unbelievable, it's like day and night from the surrounding area, so I really, really appreciate working for this city. It's beautiful. And so, I believe that our code enforcement program has a responsibility to maintain that. So, therefore, you know, our building inspectors have taken the task of being, you know, all their eyes in the city in providing us that list, and so, we have about 450 addresses that we're going to start opening cases.
Great. And then, is there a way that you triage or you prioritize, because obviously, you can't be everywhere at once, and some things are more serious than others? Is that that list that we saw in the, in the presentation?
So, one of the enhancements that we want to propose in the future will be to request volunteers. You know, when I work for the city of Corona, I started as a volunteer. I was a very successful businessman, and in my free time, I volunteered for the Parks and Code Enforcement Program, which became a career, and now I'm standing here as your chief building official. But that was back in 2005, and I started as a volunteer.
And where was that again?
I was a volunteer for the Parks and Code Enforcement Program with the city of Corona in Riverside County, and I want to implement that here with your blessing.
Oh, my goodness. So, what I will tell you is I have the pleasure of interviewing people who apply for our boards and commissions, and we have an amazing population, they're so talented, and yet, they apply to be board and commission members, and there's always more applications than there are spaces to fill, but so many people, when we interview them, and Mr. Ty knows, he's interviewed with me, Ms. Woldridge has interviewed with me, and they say, we just want to serve our city, is there anything we can do? And I have thought about, and Ms. Woldridge and I have talked about this, of having like a volunteer bureau, so you just say the word, and have I got resumes to share with you? So, the city clerk can attest to that too, right? Yeah, that's lovely to know. Thank you so much. All right. Anyway, and thank you for everything you and your departments are doing. So, council, what we just need is to just vote to accept this update on the city's code enforcement program. Who would like to make that motion?
Oh, so moved?
All right. Vice Mayor Pryor has moved that we accept the update, seconded by, is that you, Councilmember Dasek? Yeah, all right. Any further comments? All right, I'm hearing none. Madam Clerk, oh, no, we don't need a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Wow, everybody, we just went through a whole agenda. Okay, it was not the longest agenda that you're going to see in your career as councilmembers, but we finished it. And, you know, I always call for a break after we've met for two hours, because that's about as long as you should sit, but we don't have too much more time before nine o'clock, so if you all are okay, we'll just power through past nine o'clock when I would have called the break. And we go next to city manager communications, acting city manager Amy Woldridge. The floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So, tonight, Caltrans is closing the Posey 2 from 10:00 PM to 4:30 AM for maintenance, so please use a detour route if you need to leave Alameda during that time. You heard the MLK proclamation earlier, and on Monday, January 20th, Reverend Betty Williams is organizing the 48th Annual MLK Day event here at City Hall. Details will be posted on our city website in the coming days, so please take a look, and we hope you can join us. On Ralph Appizzato Memorial Parkway, signal updates are now complete and include new protected bike phases at intersections along the Cross Alameda Trail. So, for drivers that are turning, they will see a red arrow traffic light during the protected bike phase. A red arrow light means no turn on red. Drivers must bring their vehicle to a complete stop and not turn... Drivers must bring their vehicle to a complete stop and not turn until the light changes for the safety of our bicyclists and pedestrians. Construction on the Oakland-Alameda Access Project is expected to begin this summer, and that will provide a direct route from Alameda to 880 on the west side of the island. It'll reduce freeway-bound traffic within heavily populated pedestrian neighborhoods like Chinatown, and construct safe and accessible bicycle and pedestrian facilities. City's been working very diligently, I want to give a huge shout out to our staff, and the mayor's been very involved in terms of working with Alameda County Transportation Commission and Caltrans to identify ways to reduce the construction impacts, including proposed single lane closures of the tube. The Alameda County Transportation Commission will be hosting community meetings in February, and the city will be sharing this information as soon as the meetings are scheduled. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. And Madam Clerk, we don't have oral communication non-agenda items, because we didn't finish the 15 minutes before. We don't have any council referrals, so we will go to council communications, and I'm going to start with our new members. Vice Mayor Pryor, any council communications from you?
No, I don't.
This is your first meeting?
Yeah.
All right. How about you, Councilmember Bowler?
No, thank you.
All right, that's good. Anything to report, Councilmember Daysock?
Just quickly, first off, you know, congratulations on your very first official working meeting, both of you, Councilmember Pryor and Councilmember Bowler. So, it's very exciting. The reference to the 1999 code enforcement, like, I voted on that. So, time goes by fast. So, two items, one is, I just want to share with the city clerk, an email that we all received. I thought it was quite poignant, and I won't reveal the full name, but it was a letter, email letter from Denise, in which she talked about the upside of kind of daylighting our, many of our corners, but the downside of not having the money there to make sure that as people cross the street where those red zones have been placed, where, you know, that the sidewalks leading to the crossing of the street also need to be improved. So, I just thought the way that Denise had put together the letter was quite poignant, and I just wanted to make sure to provide this to the city attorney to make it a part of the official record, and I had also made sure to redact all personal information. So, it was really nice. The second thing I just want to mention is, along with Mayor Ezzy Ashcraft, who was the keynote speaker, if you will, I attended the Hanukkah menorah lighting ceremony last week, and which was, I guess, later than, because that's how it fell on the calendar, so that was quite interesting. It was very, it was very nice to attend, and it was good to see a lot of our key department heads there as well, so.
Yes, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, and I also attended the Hanukkah event, that was really tremendous. I didn't realize that Rabbi Cynthia had such a good voice, she was such a terrific singer. Also, last month, there was a lot going on over the holidays, of course, and I was really fortunate, on the 21st of December, I was able to hang out in the rain with Alameda firefighters, and with my colleague, former colleague Malia Vella, and others to distribute toys to Alameda families. It was really fun, we had a lot of toys, there were so many donations from residents of Alameda, and so many families had a great Christmas, thanks to the toy distribution. Later that day, I was able to celebrate incoming supervisor Nikki Bass at an event at the Dragon Gate Restaurant, which I wasn't even aware that Kincaid's had closed and Dragon Gate had opened, but we went to the new Dragon Gate at Jaclyn and Square and celebrated our new supervisor, who, at that time, we were celebrating her becoming the mayor of Oakland for a brief moment, and she'll be the supervisor next week, as of today, I think, actually. So, that was a really nice event. Then on the 31st, just recently, the Alameda Police Department did one of their great promotion ceremonies right here in this room. We promoted, we have four new officers, and there were several promotions and recognitions. It was really, really great to see how our, we're filling out the ranks, and we have some tremendous and terrific officers doing public safety work here in Alameda. And finally, yesterday morning, I attended the dedication of the Oakland County Administration Building, it's no longer called the County Administration Building, now it's called the Susan Marinishi County Administration Building, and that was a beautiful day, beautiful remarks by the county administrator, who's been the county administrator for about 30 years now, and she's done a tremendous job for Alameda County and for residents here. So, it's a lot going on, it's great to be back here, great to have my colleagues up here on the dais, and in closing, let me just wish an early happy birthday to Mayor Ashcraft, who will be having a birthday celebration hopefully this Saturday.
Friday.
Or sometime soon.
I'll keep celebrating all weekend. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. So, I attended two menorah lightings this year, and you're right, Councilmember Daysock, Hanukkah just fell much later than it usually does. I think the first day of Hanukkah was also Christmas Day, and so, for that reason, the two menorah lightings we do in the city, so I did the one on Sunday, December 29th, that the Chabad does at Washington Park, it was very nice, followed by the one Monday evening at Sashur Center that Temple Israel does, and yes, Rabbi Cynthia Minster sang a lot of the ceremony, and she has a beautiful voice, she was in youth choir as a child, she told us, but the crowds were a little less, everybody was enthusiastic, but a little smaller, but I think it's the schools were still on holiday, and there just weren't as many people in town, but it was very nice, and yes, we had, I was joined by our two council members, and I think Chief Looby, oh, Chief Looby spoke at the Temple Israel one, and Chief Joshi did as well. And then, yes, on Tuesday, December 31st, the APD swearing-in employee recognition event was held, and I wanted to note, because the public speaker earlier had alluded to that, when are you going to fill the ranks of the police department? Well, in a matter of, like, I think is it by the end of this month that Patrol is going to be fully staffed, and Dispatch is fully staffed, and that's huge, and I don't know how many other departments in the area, not that I'm trying to compare cities, but Chief Joshi has worked so hard, and I just love seeing the new officers that are coming in. We have a very diverse, capable, we love our officers, and the ranks are growing. It's a young department, we're getting a lot of young folks in, but it is growing, and to have Patrol fully staffed, just knock on wood, is a great thing. And then, on this past Sunday, which I think was January the 5th, I participated in a first responder and military suicide awareness walk that started at, out here in the parking lot, behind, between City Hall and the police department, and it went on over the Bay Farm Island Bridge to Station 4. They took a little bit longer break than I was realizing they would at Station 1 on Park Street, so Chief Joshi and I kind of turned back at Otis Drive and didn't go over the bridge, because we both had other things that we needed, where we needed to be, but the, it was so important and very inspirational to just remember that we need to always highlight, talk about, normalize the importance of mental health for our first responders, and really for all of us, and there is no shame in reaching out if you're having a difficult time. I got to meet one of our police dogs, so smart, and then I got to meet three adorable black labs that are all, they're emotional support dogs, and they are available for use by public safety officers who often, you know, see people on their worst days, and there's a lot of stress involved with that, and Dispatchers too, and they'll just go out and hang out. I got to thinking, you know, the mayor and council members could maybe use a visit from an emotional support dog from time to time, so just keep them coming. Oh, yeah, and I got, I just got an update that Patrol Division will be fully staffed by January 12th. That today is, what, January 7th, in a matter of days, so that is a great thing. And then finally, I can attest to the bike signal improvements on, for the bicycles, it's great, because we rode out to Alameda Point, maybe on New Year's Day, and we would get to an intersection, and it would, the signal would change to give us the green, little green bicycle light, which is, feels very powerful, but anyway, it's great, we're just trying to make the city safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. If we're going to get people out of their automobiles, we've got to give them the safe infrastructure to do so, and that's what we're doing. So with that, I want to thank you all, it is like 9:00 PM, we might have set a record, but we are adjourning this meeting, so have a great rest of your evening, we'll see you in two weeks. Thanks, everybody, for being here. And thank you, staff, for all your good work. All right. Gosh, you guys, I think you're like Good Life Charmed.